Quorum of council members. Now I'm on the ballot here. Okay, sorry. We have a quorum of council members present, and at this time I'd like to stand for the invitation. Father, again, thank you for this day. We ask your blessing on this meeting and ask your guidance, leadership to show us where we ought to go. And I want you to bless all of our police and fire department and everybody else that serves this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Praise allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm already in Texas flag. Praise allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. All right, moving on. At this time, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Announcements, we have the bulk trash, next bulk trash pickup day will be October the 7th. Just wanted to also announce and say congratulations to Rome Library for their 65th anniversary. Had a great turnout. It was a pretty good event. A lot of people showed up to that thing. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you there of all the city employees that assisted. Thank you.
We have October the 7th at 6 to 8 p.m. will be National Night Out. I hope we have as big a crowd as we had last year because it was overflowing at the Rome City Park. Hope to see everybody come to that. And we have our next two regularly scheduled council meetings, October 9th and the 23rd. We have the fire departments will have their trunk or treat October 31st at the Rome Family Park from 6 to 8 p.m. Is there any other announcements that I don't... Oh, yeah. We had, we got notified at Wise County Mayor's Coalition meeting last night that I believe it was TCEQ finally set the public hearing for the landfill they're trying to set up at Bobo Crossing.
Yes, sir.
And the public hearing will be, I believe, starts at 6 p.m. in the Decatur Convention Center. I hope, and that's on October the 30th, of course. They're trying to sneak this thing in under the radar. I hope we can pack that place and show people that we do not want this. Because the company that's setting this up has a reputation for setting one up for a year or so then selling it. And they'll put whatever they want, and this would negatively affect our water. It's right there next to the Trinity River.
Yes, sir.
So it's, I hope we can get as many people as possible at this thing. October the 30th, Decatur, 6 p.m.
Mayor, we'll be putting stuff on social media and out on our app so that people are aware. But it was very interesting, the mayor and I attended the mayor's meeting, the regional mayor's meeting last night at Paradise. And they did mention that this company has a history of holding on to it for a year or two and saying it's for construction debris. But then it ends up becoming just a traditional dump and could go as high as 160 feet in the air. And it has already very likely gotten into some of the polypsy water table. And so we want to encourage anybody who's interested. I will also have information on if you cannot make the meeting, how you can file a protest to this site being approved online through TCEQ. So all of that will be coming out next week.
All right, thank you. Any announcements from council?
Want to mention the ribbon cutting.
Go ahead.
At the school. Just wanted to let council know Mrs. King is actually representing us tonight at the elementary school for the ribbon cutting. Unfortunately, it coincided with our council meeting except for this evening, and I told her I would catch her up when she's done. But she's there representing us as a city member there at that event.
All right, there's no further announcements. Moving on to monthly staff reports. I believe we have a staff report from Public Works?
Yes. Rex, I think it's in the...
It's right here. I'll throw it there.
Over there to the side.
Good evening, mayor and council. Wanted to give a quick Public Works update. Really from the late of August. We'll start with the family park. So last, it's been quite a few council meetings back. We approved some tree service work at the family park. We had some issues with the company coming back out after we did some changes. And anyways, we had quality tree service come back, re-quit. We came back underbid or a lower bid. We did some tree work ourselves. They went through, cut the mistletoe. There was a huge dead tree in the front. They got rid of that, and the park looks real clean. They did stump grinding. And we're still going to do a little bit more stump grinding, but we're getting it ready for all the events that are about to happen. And I think it looks better. The next thing, on 9/11, we received our ditch which we had ordered back in, again, I think last year, six months ago, I believe.
That's awesome, Dave.
And we put it to work the next day. So it's a great machine. What it is, is you pretty much excavate the ground with water. You suck out the debris with the vacuum on it. It prevents damages to other utilities like gas, fiber optics, urban water lines. Great asset.
You'll actually have a picture of that at your tech register to bring this...
Like the water-mingering machines, basically what it is.
Yeah. And we are grateful for that, and we have put it to work, and it will be in use a lot. So that's a big, big thank you from Public Works.
Great work. Appreciate it. Thanks.
And then 9/23, 25, we had the West Sanitary Sewer Line pre-construction meeting. So just to fill y'all in, we have a notice to proceed date of October 6th. And really, we chose this date because the company doing the work really has to order materials still. And, you know, they got a plan a little bit ahead. But 10/6 really marks a 270 calendar date from the beginning of the project till the time they have to finish. And so hopefully here after 10/6, we start seeing mobilization. And scheduling will be coming through, and we'll push that out through Rome Connect. And any updates we get, we'll start pushing out as fast as we can and get this construction up and going as fast as we can.
This is for the, one of the projects, except for the bonds that passed. This is the replacing the old sewer lines.
Correct. So that's, that's a big update there. And then 9/25, that's today, right? Yeah, today. Sorry, my days are all getting mixed up. The big news, the West Waste Water Treatment Plant bid opening was today at 1:00.
Awesome.
So we do have great news. We did open bids at 1, like 1:05. The preliminary bids, the base bids, they came within our budget unlike last time. So this is a great deal. That's awesome. Kim Lee Horn will update us with the actual final numbers, make sure everybody's where they're supposed to be. Hopefully, their next presentation, which I'm not sure if it's the upcoming council meeting or two. But as soon as we can, I told them, let's, let's get to work and let's get some ground broken at the West plant so we can...
That is definitely a lot better news than what we got on the first round, it is. So that, that makes me feel a whole lot better. Be glad to see this thing done under, within budget.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's great news. All right. No other announcements? No, we got the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? A second. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, I believe we're going to go first to the ATMS rate review?
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to try and walk us through this. Pam Hughes, our representative, had a conflict come up at the last minute and could not be at the meeting. However, I did provide a considerable amount of documentation in your packet that discusses this. This is something that comes forward from time to time as the rates are reviewed. And the ATMS Community Steering Committee is an organization that we're a part of that operates on our behalf to try and negotiate the best rates and keep the rates as low as possible while still getting the service that our residents need. So I'm going to read through some of the things that Pam has left for me because she was, as I said, unable to appear. There's also a handout at your desk with some of the statistics and information about the rate review. From Pam's talking points, she's telling me that the Railroad Commission audits the ATMS Energy and determines what they consider to be a fair amount or fair reimbursement for their services. City of Rome is a member of the ACSC Steering Committee. So the cost to residents and commercial customers within the city limits is further reduced, and that is very helpful. Most cities I've worked for are part of the ACSC Steering Committee in order to negotiate those rates. Since we don't have a presence in Austin and we don't have an ability from which to gain that access, it's, it's better if we go en masse and have the discussion. So residents save an average of $1.51 more a month, and commercial customers will save an average of $4.92. We do have to have this approved and/or negotiated, accepted by October 1st. So this is our last meeting from which we could consider this. She did leave me some points that since 2020, ATMS Energy spent over $10.5 million in capital expenditures within the city limits of Rome. And in FY '24, they spent about $2.8 million. We have 160 customers and eight miles of pipeline within the city. And they have 26 employees who live in Wise and Parker County, so their employees are also personally invested in Wise County. And they've also donated almost $50,000 to nonprofits within the community. So I'm happy to try and answer any questions, but as I said, I'm not the subject matter expert on this. There is in your packet, there was an agenda commentary with a considerable amount of information that we were given by the ACSC to pass on to council. Hoping that you guys had a chance to read it, but if not, I'm happy to try and walk you through it.
Discussion?
She said the, the coalition that we're a part of, they negotiated the settlement and, and it's going to increase our gas rates by almost $8 a month.
Yes, $7.83 is the information she gave us for residential customers.
Well, if they've already negotiated this, I feel like that's not something, what else can we do? Like, oh, wrong, not like that.
There's not, but just trying to give you the background from how they arrived at that and the fact that the ACSC does negotiate it on our behalf. And so us being a part of that coalition benefits us. Pardon?
You're absolutely correct. We would, we would have the option to go it alone. And that's kind of the option that you have. You either accept this proposal from the steering committee, which we're a member of, and they have negotiated the best deal that they can from a position of a group.
Yeah.
Or we could go it our own and try and negotiate from a little bit weaker spot.
I feel like that, yeah, that would be a good idea to do.
Any further discussion, questions? No further discussion. Do I have a motion to approve or deny the settlement agreement with ATMS?
I make a motion that we approve the settlement agreement with ATMS Energy with ordinance number 2025-06.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All in, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item. Item B, C, and D, we will tackle together since it's all related to the same thing. The resolution authorizing signatories for the GLO Resilient Communities Program, a resolution adopting the required civil rights policies, and a proclamation for April Fair Housing Month. Do you have anything to add?
Thank you, mayor. This is some follow-up to a grant that we talked about almost 18 months ago that Mr. Loftus and I did some work on reviewing the applicants that would help us walk through and update to our comprehensive master plan as well as some of our ordinances. The team you do see at your table, I've handed out one of the original flyers for this through GrantWorks. So we will be working with that grant administration firm, which we also employ. We also selected them as the individuals who would update our comprehensive planning document. And there are several steps involved. There will be public meetings, gathering of information from staff and residents and council, et cetera. So it's a good grant that we have received, and we're very pleased to be able to roll this out and hopefully update our plan, which I believe last was looked at in 2019. And so that will help to bring us a little bit more current and help to update some ordinances. So the information you have before you this evening, I recommend approval. These are the steps that are required, or as the mayor would say, these are the streams that come attached for the money that we get. And so we do have to approve these in order to move on to the next stage of rolling out the grant and accepting the funds and starting the process.
I've got a couple of questions for clarification, if that's okay. Under the public outreach efforts, talks about persons who reside in slum or blighted areas. Do we have any specifically identified slum or blighted areas in the city of Rome?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Loftus. I think this is geared at some of the larger cities where they're trying to make sure that you actively recruit people who live in Section 8 housing that would need to have a voice at the table that might not feel comfortable participating.
Let's stand by for any further question?
Under the excessive force policy, do we have a definition of nonviolent civil rights demonstrations?
Not that I'm aware of. As I said, this is fairly boilerplate language, and it is required with the grant. Unfortunately, our chief of police is at a training session this week, so he's not able to attend the meeting.
Yeah, I was just seeking clarification because in the past five years in our country, there's been some debate about that.
Yes, there has. And there's been some recent incidences that would cause people to pay better attention to what goes on in the general public.
I'll give y'all a...
Under the fair housing policy, plan at least one activity during the contract term. Is this related to the April month?
It can be.
Okay.
We will also have tree lighting. We'll also have other things that have to do with inclusion and keeping people involved in the process.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're already doing that. Yeah, this, we, we did this master plan way back, a long time ago. You know, it needs to be updated. This is a good way to do it and get the money for it. And, but yes, we have some obligations.
Just to remind council, this is our second CDVG grant that we will have had within the last two years. The first one was for well 6, where we were rehabbing and removing the radon from that well. So we have approved similar documents for that project. This is just one of those requirements. When you have those community development block grants or CDVG allocations of funds to the city, this is required.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty boilerplate also. Obviously, we have a complaint procedure and things like that. I just wanted some clarification.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, we need to ask each one of these separate. All right.
So, Secretary, if you can make the motions and combine them all.
Can we do that? I would like to combine them all and ask for council approval. So I'd like to ask for most of this time to adopt these resolutions and to approve the obligation required by this grant.
I make a motion to approve the resolutions and proclamations associated with the acceptance of the Community Development Block Grant, Resilient Communities Program.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thanks. Thank you. Good to go. All right, let's go on to item number E. Update the bank signature card for Will Fargo.
Yes, sir. We are still active at Will Fargo, and I had been reached out to update some documents this week. And I had discovered that we still have our former police chief on the signatories. And I would like to update that and put a call on there.
Are we getting away from those...
We are.
Oh, okay.
But in the interim.
Yeah, I understand. I just thought, I thought that all the money...
We are.
We're working on it. Just know we don't need your...
No, they can, once we get this approved and the minutes are approved, I will send the minutes to the bank and they'll...
Everybody's okay with this. All right, okay.
So would we, Carmen, we need a... We need some sort of a motion at the meeting for the minutes. We've done that in the past.
Could you do it by, by way of a minute order or just a simple resolution authorizing the execution of the bank?
We didn't prepare a resolution to be signed. Do we need that?
You don't have to have it prepared in advance. We can prepare it for signature.
So just approve the resolution?
Do we have a motion to approve that resolution for signatories?
I make a motion to approve the resolution for the police chief to be a signatory for Will Fargo.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
That's done. All right, moving on to item number F. Ordinance approving participation in the creation of a public utility agency for the pursuit of a secondary water source for the city. I will start this one out. This has been our baby. As you know, with as many people sucking water out of the aquifer that runs underneath us, in 10 years or 15 years from now, we're going to be in a world of hurt if we don't find another water source for Rome and for Wise County. So all the mayor, the mayor's coalition, plus the two MUDs and the two SUDs in the county and the county itself are all going to get together and form a public utility agency. As you know, our legislation got beat in the last legislative session, so we had a plan B. We're going to do what Austin did, form a PUA, which gives us, will enable us to pursue options and make obligations to enter into contracts and get projects done and obtain funding from external sources for these projects, one of which being drawing water out of Eagle Mountain Lake, which we've got tentative approval to put a tape point in and pump it north and put in a water treatment plant and then pump it throughout Wise County. This will be our long-term answer to our water problem. So, you know, that's our, 30 to 50-year problem will be something bigger. But right now, as the aquifer drains, the ones that's going to hurt the most are people with shallow wells that's been here the longest. And we're pumping millions of gallons of water out of this, under this aquifer daily. So this is an answer to the problem, but we, every entity within the PUA has to pass a concurrent ordinance. So you've got a copy of that ordinance in your packet. We'd like you to peruse that. It's, there'll be 15 members on the board. We'll have one from each city of the nine mayors present, plus two from the special utility district, which Walnut Creek is one, and two from the MUDs, which is the developers municipal utility district. So it's 15 members on the board. They will not have a controlling interest on that board. So I don't see a problem with that, and the county will have two seats. The one we're recommending for our board member is our lovely Mr. Dominguez, who I think will be the perfect choice to sit on that board. It cannot be an electric official. So please look over that ordinance. We have to give public notice at least twice within a 14-day period before the vote happens. So we would like to get this voted on.
Second.
Yeah, second meeting in October, because we have to have it passed before October 31st. Yes, it's going to cost the city some money to get in on this because it has to have operating funds until we get the money from customers coming in. And there's a chart you've been given, so we've really got off pretty light, my opinion, so. Go ahead.
Did we create an ordinance or a resolution to create the regional water district? We did. Do we need to somehow get rid of that? No, okay.
It got, it got defeated in the legislature, so we, that is...
Yeah, I just didn't know if the paperwork here needed to go away.
That's a good question, and I haven't looked at it. It would be relatively easy to fix, but it's a good question just for looking purposes.
Well, I asked you guys to look at this thing and, you know, if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them or a man that can answer them for you. Every mayor in Wise County and everybody's on board with this, our state reps. I think it's a great idea.
So I know that we, we did add money to, to, for the regional water district. Is each city and each representative that's going to be on the board, are they going to also?
Yes.
Put into pot?
They're, I think I put it in the packet, but I may have just put our information. But they're going to raise approximately $300,000 through the donations or through the money that's going to be funded. Actually, if you look at the back of, on exhibit A of the interlocal or the ILA, creating the Westport Public Utility Agency, it has the breakout from Al Gore on down to what Wise County is going to pay, to what the Rolling Bay Ranch will pay, and the West Wise County SUD, the New Fairview MUD, et cetera. I believe New Fairview has a fairly big piece of this at $31,000. Bridgeport is $32,000, Decatur is $40,000, Wise County's $40,000, and then Walnut Creek is $82,000 that they're putting in.
For...
Yeah. I don't know where it is in the packet, Mrs. Ty, but it's, it's in there. I believe that will be under item F, probably the last page.
But the monies that we contributed to the creation of the water district, I believe they're rolling those funds over into the PUA.
Anything that's left...
Anything's left over will go, it's not going to be just go into the ether sphere. It's going to be pulled back into the PUAs operating expenses.
Okay, I know. Do you see it, Mr. Loftus?
Mrs. Ty.
There we go. Yeah, I don't, I can look at it.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't have that.
I apologize. It was on my printed copy, so I assumed it had gone into the packet.
Well, Mike, Mayor Crenshaw said, I think that it's something that we need, especially here in southern Wise County.
I will say that in all the cities I've worked for and all the counties, I have never witnessed elected officials come together as they have in Wise County. And it was evident again last night, the Paradise City Hall was packed with people. Not only elected officials, but staff members in support, ancillary businesses that might have some support, the engineering firm that's working with, the PUA that was also working with the water district. Andy Hopper was there, gave us a great update on all the things that had kind of gone through the legislative session thus far and actually taught us some new things that we were not aware of because he gets to see quite a bit behind the scenes that we don't. So I had his off to the group for all the work that they have done. And Mr. Cabralis has been really carrying the lion's share of the work to get this moved forward and to be the staff contact. And so Mayor Crenshaw's done a great job of teeing up the concept and letting you know since the Water Control District, or it just didn't make it through the legislature, this is our option to pivot and do something else because we can't wait another two years to try and, and bring something forward and find somewhere really further, further reaching.
So right now, since this has to be advertised in a newspaper a couple of times, what are you seeking tonight?
Nothing.
Nothing. We're just bringing this to your awareness so that you can look at it, give you time to digest it, read the ordinance. Because every one of us is passing an identical ordinance. It has to be, every entity within this PUA has to pass the same ordinance to, to create this entity. And it's basically an interlocal agreement amongst all the entities so that we can act as one. We can go get money from...
Texas Water Development Board.
Yeah, Texas Water Development Board is already, we've already got some projects set up to them to get them in the pipeline. We can get the funding for these projects because none of us can do this on our own. Because the first project would be to put the tape point in the Eagle Mountain, bring it north to somewhere around Newark, put in a water treatment plant, and then pump it north to Bobo, and then we'll go from there. So, yeah.
So is there any way that this can fail like the last one?
No, that's why Austin did this, and we're using their counsel. That's why they had to do it. The big sticking point was who controlled the board, and that's why they got defeated. But this one, no one entity will have a controlling interest on this board, and it'll never be able to.
Which was really what the cities were concerned. If you end up with a municipal management district or a mud as kind of the controlling partner or having a weight and share of seats based on their population, your cities often will be left without representation or any ability to function on behalf of their community. And in my opinion, I think as MUDs continue to come into the state and as people continue to experience problems, we're going to see some frustrated folks who don't understand why the city... I had an email today from a Realtor who did not understand something that was going on just south of the highway, and I had to regretfully inform him that that was not within the city limits and it was really not our information. It wasn't our issue that we, he was questioning. But people don't understand that. They see, I'm in Rome, there's Rome. I go to the mailbox in Rome. I go to, you know, QT in Rome. I live in Rome. Oh, actually, you don't. You live in the Rome ZTJ, and we don't have any particular authority over your area. And I think this will be a continued frustration. And so one of the things, especially Mayor Crenshaw, I didn't want to see was private developers or MUDs having a controlling interest in the water district where the cities lost a voice. And so that is some of why it failed in the legislature. So this PUA is what we, the attorney that the group hired to keep in their back pocket is kind of an option from which to move this forward. There are Lloyd Gosling's office, which is kind of the water person touch point there in Austin. There are Lloyd Gosling's office, which is kind of the water person touch point there in Austin. And we've been working with them through Mr. Cabralis to get these ordinances all put together and passed. And like the mayor said, we've, we've been working on this for at least a year, if not longer, to get it to here. Now, Mrs. Ty, the only way this could fail is if we find no source for water. But as far as creating the entity and starting the process, I think we have really good cooperative buy-in from everybody, including Walnut Creek, Special Utility District, the West Wise, Special Utility District, the RBR Utility District. We have a broad canopy of folks that are coming together to try and solve this issue. So I'm, I'm very encouraged to see what, what's been going on.
So how does this work? Does this is, this is a PUA? So they are now getting the funds for water and from, they're, they're billing the customers, correct? And then they get the funds?
So the, the PUA functions, think of Ortrinity Regional Water District. It's the same concept, just by a different name. We modeled all of our bylaws and all of our governance concepts from what they put together. They started out as a small entity. It took, um, according to Mr. Cabralis, seven years to bring water to the region in Denton. And now they have just completed after all these many years, they're opening a lake and they're bringing water from East Texas over to fund. And Ortrinity is, has a huge customer base now. They sell to cities across the northern region.
What I think she's asking is, is how does, how do we get the water from them? Or is she going to be paying her water bill to the Westport PUA? No. I think it'd be like, we buy our water from Walnut Creek. Walnut Creek's going to be a member of this PUA. And the sort, all this does is help us pay to acquire the source. We'll still get our water the way we've always been getting it, but it'll be a more dependable source, cleaner source and.
More abundant.
More abundant. So, and everybody that's, and they're going to, all the stuff's going to be paid for from customer base, from the customer. So.
So nothing is going to change. We're still going to have the utility fund. We're still going to have all of that stuff.
So the city of Rome would become a customer of the PUA.
Okay.
So will all the other entities involved in this, including the muds, including the county, et cetera. They could become a customer of the.
We'll have a seat on the board.
And we'll all be equal in that.
Yeah.
No, how?
No waiting.
No waiting. It's all, every, well, every vote will be equal. Uh, the only people that have more based on their customer base and population would be the county. They have a bigger area than Rome, a lot more people to cover. So we gave them two seats, which is not unusual. The muds have way more people to serve than we do, so they got two seats. The SUDs like Walnut Creek, a lot more customers. They need a lot more resources. They get two seats on the, on the board. They are a lot more invested. So, but every city will have one person. There's fifteen people on the board. Oh, yeah, let's see, we have, yeah, fifteen, West Wise SUD, Walnut Creek, Rolling B Ranch, New Fairview, and every city, and two for the county. So that's fifteen seats on the board. They'll have six. And the cities will have the rest. So nobody has a controlling interest on this board. That was the big problem we had with, with the water district and why it got beat because they couldn't get a controlling interest or we wasn't going to let them. So they didn't like that. But this, I think, is a good idea. It's an answer to our water problem. It's the, yeah, it's the only one we got because we're not going to give any more lakes built around here for any of our lifetime.
Not the time it takes us to serve the public.
Until they can figure out what to do with the saltwater for desalination, bringing it out of the gulf, we're not going to get that either. So I believe this is a viable option. It's going to be cost effective. It'll, it'll make sure we have a clean, dependable source of water for Rome. Plus, with our wells, we're drilling deeper and eventually try to get a new water tower so we have at least two towers to back each other up. The maintenance on, when we shut one down, we'll have good pressure, good supply of water, and we'll be able to take care of the people in Rome.
The main, the main reason to bring it forward to you now is so that we could answer some of these questions. And if you had something that we needed to go research, we could get that information and bring it back. Because we are on a time deadline to get this approved in order to get this up and running because they want to kick off operations and have the first meeting of the board of the PUA in January. They're not letting grass grow under their feet, blessedly.
Yeah, we're way ahead. They're way ahead of the power curve. We've already got an engineering firm that's got the projects submitted to, is it, what's the?
BWD.
BWD. We've already got the projects in the pipeline for funding. So once we get this thing stood, we're going to be a couple of years ahead of where North, Ortrinity was. Because they had to do all this by discovery learning. We're just, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're getting it done. So hopefully, within five to seven years, we could have new water coming in here. But we don't start now, we'll never get it. Right. Is there any other questions about the PUA?
Okay, well, if you think of any email from me directly only, just, just send them to me and I will, uh, if I need to place it on the next agenda, I'll work with the mayor to get that on there so we can answer any questions. But as the mayor had, had been really clear, all of these entities are passing either the same ordinance or resolution, depending upon what type of agency there are, that they are, so that we can get this approved because they have to be the same. So we don't have a whole lot of, we have no whistle bird. Uh, so I have customized our forms to say city of Rome as they need to. Then we will get the signatures and we'll get them all back. But this could be a very good thing for us, if we believe so.
All right, moving on. To a sad note, we have, we are now, uh, going to address the resignation of place five council member, Mr. Casey Schumay.
Original vote.
Original, yes. Uh, I understand you're, you're stepping down from the council, but as a, the city would like to say thank you for your service to this city. I know you do it for free. You know, this isn't something you get paid to do. Everybody volunteers for this, but we appreciate everything you've done for it. And we understand, hey, your family comes first.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, like I said, this is my last meeting. This was not an easy decision for me. It took a lot of thought and deliberation, but ultimately, I'm stepping down and fo- focus on my family, professional, school responsibilities. Um, and I kind of have to shift gears a little bit because it's getting a little busy. But truly, it has been an honor to work with each of you, not just to serve our community, but to work alongside you guys. And I'm just, I'm grateful for the opportunity. And while it's difficult for me, I know even while I'm stepping away, Rome is in great hands with y'all. So I, like I said, I'm grateful and I look forward to see what you guys bring in the future.
Well, Mr. Schumay, I have to say, when I first came on and you were new to council, I was tremendously impressed with your dedication to your community and being a part of it while you were working full-time and going to school and raising a family. So my thanks is to you for being a council member because I know that is an extremely hard job and it is often thankless. So I'll extend that from staff to you. We have been very blessed by your service to Rome. And should you ever decide to change your mind, just give me a call and let me know.
Definitely. Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And thanks, Stephanie, for allowing you to do this because I know how hard it is with children, smaller. I don't know how hard it is, but I can imagine how hard it is with children. So thank you and thank her.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Casey.
We all appreciate everything you've done, brother.
Just want to say thank you. You will be missed. That's, that's it, I guess, before I have to start tearing up a period. The five of us work great together. I just don't know what we're going to get.
It's all right. There'd be people that care about to sit here. They wouldn't be here. So that's how I look at it.
This way, you guys will get governance training again.
Yeah, okay, uh, let's do the hard thing now. Uh, we need to have a vote to accept the resignation of place five council member Casey Schumay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to reluctantly accept Mr. Schumay's resignation and direct staff to post for the opening for a period of. Okay. Do I need to say how many weeks?
The mayor and I were talking about this and we thought we would start with two weeks and see what kind of applications we received. Uh, Carmen may want to weigh in because I've talked to him about it as recently as yesterday.
Yeah, once you break it into two, resignation, then you guys can back up and talk a little bit about the other.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Don't like to take a motion.
Reluctantly also, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Thank you again for your service, brother. Appreciate it. But now, moving on to the posting of the applications to fill the remainder of that term, which will be from now till the May election uh, for the place five council seat.
Yes, sir. So this is where we would need a motion, Mrs. Ty, for us to open up the seat to accept applications, much like we did when Mr. Schumay was originally appointed. We accepted that for a short period of time. The candidates came in and introduced themselves at the lectern to council and expressed why they wanted to be on council and, and how they were a part of the Rome community. Council then broke into executive session and had a discussion and then came back, selected a candidate. So I'm assuming that that would be the same process you all would want to follow this time as well.
Is that what y'all want to do?
We've said, at which meeting will we carry, will have the vote?
Are we busy on the next meeting?
Well, we're always busy, but we're not going to be quite that busy.
Up to council, I mean, how much time you want to give?
Last meeting wasn't that busy. You are correct. I think we had seven minutes on the clock. So we could either use the second meeting in October or the first meeting in November to appoint Elder Mr. Johnson is not going to be at that meeting. He's, he's going to be out. So if we could host it long enough and then maybe make that decision at the last meeting in October, then he could be here to have some, uh, build in that process.
And so we'll just put it down for the second meeting in October to make the decision.
Yes, sir. Let me give a date so we can let people know. I would need applications in by the fifteenth of October.
Come to you. And the application will come to you.
You'll go to Ms. Brooke, actually. She will have all that information. It'll be on the website.
So I need to, or someone needs to make a motion for that, correct?
I move that we advertise the position for appointment to replace Casey Schumay in place five until October fifteenth and then have candidates presented at the following meeting.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Wait in real quick, right before we vote. Just a reminder, under statute, you are not required to fill this position. So this is an option that you have. The statute says may fill. So if you had second thoughts about requiring yourself to do it, it sounds like this ordinance is making that decision, saying that you will fill the position.
Let me clarify. This will be a motion to consider applicants for this position. And if none are found that are qualified, we will not fill this position.
Do we need to re make the motion?
I just re, just for the record, I've restated so the secretary gets it right.
I move that we consider applicants city council place five until October fifteenth and then optionally appoint a suitable candidate at our discretion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
All right. Do we have any other items for future agendas? Nothing heard with that? I'll accept a mo- a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? We got a bunch. What do you mean? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned at six forty-five.